Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order at this time. If you will, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I will call on Councilman Scott to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor, let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come tonight to do business in this community that we're so proud to live and serve in, Father. We pray for each person here and those who are unable to attend. Help us make the decisions that benefit our citizens and our community the best, Father. We continue to pray for this virus as it goes around our nation, Lord, with lots of uncertainties and lots of questions. Just pray that, Lord, people look to you as a master in all that you do. Give us the wisdom and strength to make positive decisions. All this we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the younger states of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. There is one known change, and that is to remove the first public hearing, RZ-20-04, remove that from this evening's agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to ask that consent item number four be moved to business item or removed from the agenda.
Okay. So, what was that again, business item what? I'm sorry.
Business item number four.
I'd like to know why would need to be removed, so can we put it on the business item?
Yes, we say we move it to the business.
Move it to business item four.
Is there a business item one being removed?
No. Sorry. Public hearing. Public hearing number one.
Frankly. I'm sorry.
Public hearing number one will be removed.
Thank you.
And then, under consent agenda, it is item number four. Approval of amended language of LGC, move that to business item number four.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Okay. Not seeing any. Have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Same movement, Mayor.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. This time, I think, Mayor, I think you have a quick presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to take a quick moment of the council's time, as well as the public's time, to recognize one of our outstanding employees. The employee's name is Eric McDowell, he's standing right here. Mr. McDowell is almost a four-year employee with the town. He's in charge of all of our IT, including his family is here as well. Mr. McDowell recently graduated from Western Governor's University in North Carolina with his Master's of Business Administration degree. He's one of only a few people in the town that have a Master's degree and that level of business administration. He has been an outstanding asset to the town in every way. Comes to work every day, works over. As you can see now, he is responsible for all of the videos that you see going up for these council meetings, and he is here tonight predominantly to do that work. He works in all of our departments, takes care of all of our information technology, which is a huge feat in itself. He has a couple people that help down them, but for the most part, he is the Department One, of which others' communities our size likely have departments much larger to do the same amount of work. He is just an outstanding asset for all of us. We wanted to congratulate him on his degree and recognize him as he approaches his fourth year here with the town. I also know that normally our routine is going out and shaking everybody's hands, but there is no routine right now with COVID-19, so.
I just want to say thank y'all for everything that y'all have done for me as well, and for actually giving me the opportunity to work here. I'm greatly appreciated of it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And Eric, can you see me after this? I need my password reset. I'm just kidding. But that's the usual for him. Awesome job, Eric. Okay, this evening, I have the pleasure of swearing in one of our officers ministering the oath of office to Chandler Kohler. How are you doing tonight, sir?
Good, how are you?
All right. You have the Bible up there. I'm just gonna sit here and do it. You'll place your hand on the Bible and just repeat after me, please, sir. I state your name.
I, Chandler Stone Kohler.
The undersigned do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully
I will faithfully.
And bear true allegiance
And true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
The State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers
And the constitutional powers.
And authorities
And authorities.
Which are
Which are.
Or may be established
May be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be alert
That I will be alert.
And vigilant
And vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
Criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner, on account
In any manner, on account.
Of personal bias
Personal bias.
Or prejudice
Or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Execute the duties of my office
Execute the duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skill
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities
Abilities.
And judgment
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Be safe out there. Okay, next item under presentation is the Appearance Commission Annual Report. Ms. Scott, how are you doing this evening?
I'm good, thanks.
Good. The thirty misjures.
I hope that you all received our annual report for this year. Should be in your packet. I'm Peggy Scott, Chairperson of the Appearance Commission, and here to just kind of go over the basics, you can look through your report. Our members as of right now are Jeremy Pierce, Connie Barber, Robin Cook, Mary Foy Ragsdale, Julia Narin, and we have one new member, Lee Stewart. Two more openings are available. On the donated tree program, we received 11 trees this year, a total of 173 trees since the start in 2010. A new donated tree plaque has been installed out here in the garden. If you notice, it's much larger, it holds 100 names this time instead of 50, and we're estimating this will last 10 years. We usually average about 10 trees a year. This year in completion, we installed or replaced, well, they renovated, the Grantham Pump. Lena Parks, the great-granddaughter of the Granthams, donated 2,500 for this project, and the Appearance Commission paid the balance. And I think it turned out really nice, it looks good. We did 15 new trees along Johnston, Front and Second Streets, trying to rehab that area for ham and yam and different events that happen downtown. We participated in landscaping and lighting the new wayfinding signs. And then, our big project was the boat ramp. We did a sales shade shelter up by the parking lot. There is going to be a nautical flagpole. It will have crossbars, they're not there right now, they didn't come in. And then, we'll be doing landscaping all the way from that area on the terrace, all along the boat, the walking trail, all the way down to the monument. That will be all new. We're also adding new steps that will be wider and will allow for two people on the steps, where now that long set of steps is only one person can be on them at a time. And then, we're going to add another set of steps closer to where the boat ramp is, because people tend to walk down through there. So, we're excited about that to be finished in the fall. We would like to recognize Mr. George and his family for a generous gift of the J.B. and J.P. George Endowment. These funds are very much appreciated and help our commission reach its goals of beautification. It's been my pleasure to sit on this board and work with the wonderful staff we have. No matter what we come up with, they get the job done and are truly very lucky, we are very lucky to have them. And on behalf of the Appearance Commission and the entire town, I want to thank the staff. Is there any questions?
So, I did have one question, Ms. Scott. So, out of the, you said we received 11 tree donations this year.
Uh huh.
So, is that just, have we already purchased those trees, or is that just held in account?
Not yet.
Okay.
As we get the donations, we keep track of it on a spreadsheet. And then, as we find places to plant new trees, like all these 15 trees were all accounted for by donation.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yes, that's where they come from.
Okay.
And so, we changed how that works. We're not doing all crepe myrtles anymore, because an arborist told us we were overplanting. If a disease ever took all the crepe myrtles, we would lose all of our trees, and they said you need to be diversified. So, at that time last year, we decided to kind of revamp the whole program. And now, we, once we decide on a place where new trees should go, then we decide what kind of tree that should be.
All ahead.
Okay. What a great year it has been, Smithville's a wonderful town with so much to offer. We appreciate the ability this council gives us to keep our beauty alive and thriving. That's all we have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to our public hearings. We'll begin with S U P dash 20 dash 08, Cash Auto Rental. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so if there's anyone wishing to speak for or against this matter, if you will, please stand and be sworn in at this time by the clerk.
Please raise your right hand, please, Father, we are bound to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, Father.
I do. Thank you. Okay, again, gentlemen, this is S U P dash 20 dash 08, Cash Auto Rental. This time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Same movement, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Stephen?
Good evening, council and mayor. This special use permit 2008 is Randall Matson is requesting a special use permit to operate an automobile rental business on a property located in the B3 zoning district. It's also in the entry corridor overlay district. So, this is located at the corner of Parish Drive and West Market Street. Again, it's B3 zoning. The property currently has a car sales in the front portion on the parking lot and in the building. In the rear, it's a trucking business. So, this would be a third tenant for that business and auto rental. So, the company's called Cash Auto Rental. This isn't the town limits. It's owned by Roy Willard Willey, is the property owner. The property is .76 acres. The zoning, as I said, B3 and ECO. The access to this is West Market Street. Is there any other applicable information here? The surrounding uses, Cox Auto Repair is to the north and west. To the south is Market Street and the Plan B nightclub across the street. Willey's Grocery and Supply is to the east. And to the west also is Cox Auto Repair. So, surrounded by B3 zoning, makes the uses. So, this is an existent commercial building that is being divided up into office spaces. The site is divided by a white privacy fence dividing the front portion, more the retail portion from the trucking business behind, and that went up some years ago. I'm not sure what the situation was, but probably 2007 or '08 is when that landscaping and fence went in with landscaping. There are two paved parking stalls to the west of the building and 16 to the east. As I said, the uses, there's a trucking business that operates out of the rear of the building, which is completely segregated from the front uses. Automobile sales was approved in 2019, and they had a condition that they would use no more than 10 cars, utilizing no more than 10 cars in the parking lot. So, that left several cars for guests and other uses. Being out there, typically, there's no more than 68 vehicles on the lot at any one time currently. So, this is how the site's currently configured. You can see the parking stalls on the right side. I've never seen it parked this full. This is probably a very old image. To the left, you can see the two parking stalls, there's one car parked there at this time, and then behind that white fence, you can see it's a trucking business, and there's apparently some automobile parking for employees in the near ground area. This is the site plan provided by the applicant on the left. I've kind of annotated it on the right here to make it clear. The applicant is proposing using those two parking stalls to the west of the building for his business, and he's gonna be renting that portion of the business shown in yellow, that portion of the building shown in yellow. Just as an aside here, they're already open and in business. They came to the special use permit process through code enforcement. They didn't realize it was a conditional use or special use, and so, staff has worked with them to come into compliance, and Mr. Randall's been very good to work with in terms of coming into compliance, filling out the applications, and doing what's right. I kind of described most of this. There's enough parking for all the uses based on the code requirements. The primary business, the car rental business, is in Raleigh, so this is kind of a satellite business, where you'll be doing billing and other business in town, and when cars are needed, you'll have them shipped out, brought to the site for the specific rental, and then they're gone. So, there's not gonna be any storage of vehicles here other than the two cars, and there's gonna be no work on the cars and nothing else related to the business other than those two spots. So, car rental businesses are allowed in the B3 with a special use permit. There is the entry corridor district, but it really pertains to new development, this is really not new development, so there's nothing other than signage that applies to the eco zoning. The access to this site will remain unchanged. The driveways aren't changing, it's just utilizing two of the existing parking spots. There are no pedestrian accommodations anywhere with this site, and this doesn't change, this proposal doesn't change any of that. Commercial signs, there was a commercial sign, he graciously removed it because it was not permitted. So, a sign permit has been applied for, and after this approval, if approval is gained, staff will process that sign application for the business. So, with that, I've listed staff's opinions of findings of fact. If the council agrees with them, I can go through them, or I could go on to the recommendation. Staff is recommending approval with two conditions. One, that the parking of the cars for rent be limited to the two stalls, stripe stalls on the west side of the building, and that all signs for the business comply with the sign ordinance. With that, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Stephen? The applicant will please come to the podium. Have you heard what Mr.?
Wenzman.
Wenzman said, sorry.
Yes, he's been very gracious, yes.
Yeah. Do you agree with his testimony?
Absolutely.
Do you have anything else we'd like to add?
We're a small administrative bill-collecting payment center. We do utilize the two spaces as we have found over the years that many of our clients were driving from Four Oaks, Wilson, Smithfield, et cetera, all the way to Raleigh. We found a need for our essential business for transportation, sir, and we tried to be fully compliant. We take care of the exterior and interior of the facility, we keep it tidy. As Mr. Wenzman said, we do no repairs on site, we have no wrecked vehicles, we keep just the two vehicles and bring vehicles in as need. Our average rental goes from anywhere from seven to 45 days, so 95% of our vehicles are utilized or on rent, so we don't have a traffic issue. We have low traffic, zero to four people a day, and we're mostly taking payment over phone, doing collections, and farming out repairs to performance auto, Black's Tires. We have accounts with Autozone O'Reilly's, several other restaurants, Walmarts, Lowe's, we bring a lot to the community as far as patronizing our local neighbors as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this matter? Okay. Any additional questions for the council? If not, now we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Same movement, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, you can have a seat. Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, we can go through the eight findings of fact as Stephen mentioned, or I'll entertain a motion affirmative for all of those if there are any issues.
Make a motion to approve findings of facts, one through eight.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the findings of fact, all in favor?
Mayor, before we vote, I'm just with the conditions, the recommendation by planning staff.
That'll come next. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny. If you do would like to approve and consider the two findings that the planning department recommended, recommendations, or you can do others. Do I have a motion to approve with the two recommendations from the?
I'll make a motion, will you approve it with these two recommendations?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with the two recommendations from the planning department, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say one thing.
Sure.
I appreciate the applicant's attitude and working with the town. I mean, this, you know, sometimes people don't like it when they're not in compliance, but, you know, but you being, showing your professionalism, understanding the issue, and wanting to do his best for the town in Smithfield, we appreciate it. We thank you so much for your, you know, working with, working with the town to accomplish what you want to accomplish, to what we need to accomplish. And I just want to say thank you for your following the rules and doing what you needed to do. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll come to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Edwards. I'm the executive director of the Downtown Smithfield Development Corporation at 200 South Front Street. The last time I came and spoke to you all, I actually didn't come to speak to you all, I phoned in, it was during the budget session, so it's been a while. And since then, since mid-March, a lot has changed with regard to my daily job. So, I just wanted to share a little bit with you all about what the DSDC has been up to. So, in mid-March, just as COVID-19 was becoming an issue in the state of North Carolina, the DSDC rolled out a hashtag "Smithfield Strong" campaign to encourage people to continue supporting downtown businesses. It's always so important to support our locally-owned businesses, but it's never been quite as important as it has been the last few months. These are the businesses who make our town unique, they support our nonprofits and schools, are committed to our community, and keep more of the dollars they earn here in Smithfield. Through this promotion, we provided koozies to businesses to give to customers who made a purchase, worked with Oak City Collection to have t-shirts printed to raise awareness of the campaign, and ultimately, brought Scott Mason, the WRAL Tarheel Traveler, to Smithfield for a segment that he did that hopefully you all saw. As you know, we were forced to effectively cancel all of our events as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the restrictions on mass gatherings from the governor's executive order, and with everyone's health and safety in mind. While events are typically a big part of our work, particularly at this time of year, this forced pause has given me the ability to focus more on the economic development side of my job. In all honesty, it's allowed me to catch up on some of the important work that usually gets pushed aside due to the deadlines and urgency associated with those events. This time's also allowing the DSDC to evaluate our events for any changes or improvements that may need to be made, and we started by surveying our businesses to capture the economic impact that those events have for them. We've worked very hard over the past four months to ensure good communication with our businesses and provide as much assistance to them as possible. We've sought out opportunities like the Grills Fund for Main Street Revitalization, a competitive grant program offered through Main Street America, which would provide us with funding to bring in technical assistance for the businesses with regard to storefront design and merchandising. I've referred our businesses to several opportunities for grants and assistance, including the Chambers Business in Need Program, the Heartbeat of Main Street Grant Program, which I've written several letters of recommendation for in the past week, and many others. Based on the need for assistance, we actually developed our own grant program, the Smithfield Strong Business Assistance Disaster Relief Grant. We've been able to provide $15,000 in grant funds to five different businesses. My board is actually considering a second round of funding at this point to be able to help more businesses in a more flexible way and improve downtown Smithfield. We've coordinated two social media seminars with the assistance of the Small Business Center. We will, as a result of a needs assessment that we conducted, or still conducting, but the evidence has been clear, the number one need for our businesses is marketing assistance. So, we'll be bringing in a group called Local Bull to Smithfield in late August for a marketing workshop and to provide some one-on-one assistance based on their expertise. I continue to assist property owners, find tenants for their building, prospective business owners, try to find locations for their businesses, and in helping actually one business with some potential growth and expansion opportunities that they have. I'm pleased to report that we've had a new business open, Salon 1220 and Boutique 1220 at 129 North Second Street, opened in June. And then, the Gilded Pear Brew House will open at 234 East Market Street within the next week or so. In addition to these economic development initiatives, there have been many other opportunities and projects we've undertaken. We partnered with the Johnston County Arts Council to apply for a grant that I identified, which would allow us funds to bring musicians downtown on a more regular basis in a way that people can in a way that people can enjoy the music but also be socially distanced. We identified a proper, an opportunity for the town to apply for a grant to make some major improvements to the Hastings House without a cost to the town, and have been working with Gary Johnson, Parks and Rec Director, to make that application process. Through our partnerships with the North Carolina Main Street Center and the UNCG Main Street Fellows Program, we have continued to assist with facade design requests. We've continued awarding our standard grants, including our recent approvals for the Onin Grant Program and the R2 Rush Grant to attract restaurants and retail downtown. We've recently published a collection of 11 walking routes designed to bring people downtown and also to encourage them to visit the many assets that are downtown and nearby, so neighborhoods, parks, the river and Greenway, obviously. I hope that y'all are aware, this is big exciting news last week, that the Gabriel Johnston Hotel building is under contract, which is phenomenal news. And I'm assisting the buyers, they work through the due diligence that's being completed to ensure that we actually get to the closing. This is all in addition to fielding many requests from the state for projects that could bring national media to downtown, responding to requests from our partners, business and property owners, citizens, handling all of the day-to-day tasks, social media management for accounts that have more than 14,000 followers and great engagement. The last thing that I'm very pleased to report is I submitted our annual statistics to the North Carolina Main Street Center. And in the last year in Smithfield, even with everything that's gone on, we've had three facade improvements, two building rehabilitations, 11 net full-time jobs created, one net new business, and two business expansions. More than 540 volunteer hours for a value of more than $10,000 contributed back into our community, and private investment of more than $2,746,375. We very much appreciate the town's support of the DSDC and the small businesses in this community. The town and its staff have been very responsive, creative, flexible, and proactive in their efforts to support the small businesses, and it has not at all gone unnoticed. So thank you all very much.
Sarah, nice job. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Yes, hey, how are you? I'm Omar McKnight, former resident of Smithfield, North Carolina. This is my home, wasn't once at a time my home. I come to forth to bring forth that I see a lot of economic development going on within the city. However, in East Smithfield, there's nothing. I've been away for about 15, 16 years, still the growth there is still stagnant. I see, as so many have mentioned, so much input is going on to other parts of the area. However, East Smithfield is always overlooked. But that's for another day, but I just come to speak on another issue. My mother, she lives on 1511 Old Goldsboro Road. I've coordinated with Mr. Cho, as well as Town Manager, Mr. Scott, on the issues about the overgrowth that take place on that, on that road right behind the Waffle House. I have correspondence as well with Mr. Cho, dating back way from last year. I've learned early on through my political career as well to always keep a paper trail. So when I come, I come with facts and not just rattling off ideas or things that I see that are relevant. So prior to this year, I told Mr. Cho last year, I got to start on it late. But this year, I told him that I would be proactive, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. So previous to July, I've corresponded with Mr. Cho, I say numerous times, at least four or five times via email, as well as coming down to, to City Hall. So I felt as if Mr. Cho wasn't as active of enough, so I went to the next leg. So I spoke with the town manager, Mr. Scott. He was a bit more accessible as well, and he corresponded. Again, the overgrowth that is next to 1511 Old Goldsboro Road, and I would like to read the ordinance if that's feasible, I won't take much of your time. "Which is in violation, code, I mean weeds or grasses cannot be over 12 inches in height, which lies less than 100 feet from any abutting open street, or which lies less than 100 feet from any adjoining property line, which contains a structure or is a place of heavy growth or weeds or grasses over 12 inches in height, which lies within 50 feet of any occupied dwelling." Again, so I've emphasized that over and over again, still there's nothing done. We see rats, rodents, foxes, things of that nature. I have a niece, I have a little dog as well, that often comes to those residents, and still, nothing's done. Not only that lot, I think the same landowner owns two lots. I, for one, take care of Mrs. Fraser's lot. Soon as the season began, she gets a notice. You know, I do a little landscaping, however, I take care of that lot on the corner, as well as Jordan Peacock's lot, which is my grandfather's lot. So I was just curious to, trying to understand, is there a set of rules for a particular people? Or at the end of the day, some people get an ordinance right away, and some people get away scot-free? So I just think that is a reflection not only of the leadership, but as the organization as well, and only to rectify the situation. Let's all be held accountable for our actions and, as well as our properties. So I just come to bring forth the issue, to let you know that it's been ongoing. It's continued to go, it's continued to be ongoing. The lot, one lot has been cut one time, and that was early on in the season. However, I've just recently rode by and took pictures, it's still high again. So I'm still going through the same issue over and over and over and over again. And it's beginning to be annoying as well. My mother's a senior, she can't get out, and she doesn't know the political process. So it's only right that I come here to address you guys, you know what I mean? And that's just why I'm here. Again, I would like to see something done, and I'm getting tired of coming back and forth from Raleigh to address these issues. But again, this is my home, so I feel like I still have, still have, I still have belongings here. My mother's here, my niece is here, this is the town that I was raised in. So again, I beg you, and I beg you, you know, to please look into the issues. It's beginning to be a nuisance. Again, over and over again, like I say, everything is happening everywhere except there, you know? And it's, it's not, you know, it's not satisfying to me being gone so long to hope to come back to see something change, but still nothing. So again, I would just ask you, the council, to hopefully enforce it and to look into the situation a little deeper, because again, it's taking up some of my time in order to keep coming back and forth, corresponding via email, as far as to rectify the issue.
So which, which property is your, is it your mother? Did you say your mother's?
Yes, sir.
Is that the one at the very end that's kind of right behind?
Correct. My mother's property is right directly behind?
The Waffle House?
Correct.
Yeah.
There's one that's next to it, which has, I think I know what it is, is he's trying to put sticks to try to make it a forest.
So?
I'm familiar with code, too.
So I saw it today, to be honest with you. So I was actually riding around this morning, surveying the town, and I rode every street in Pine Acres.
Yes, sir.
To check for water, to check for debris, and I actually rode down there. And I actually saw the sticks you're talking about in the plantings. I believe, Mr. Manager, if I'm correct, that property owner has been contacted about grass. So just so that you know, everybody, try to treat everybody fairly, no matter who owns the property.
Yes, sir.
Now, you may elect to cut yours, or the neighbors, or whatever. Some property owners are not so willing to cooperate all the time. I'm not saying this property owner is not.
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying that in general.
Correct.
But, Mr. Manager, am I correct that there has been correspondence sent out?
Multiple, of course, Paul.
Okay.
We also cut that lot recently, and now it's starting to grow back again and get in operation. When that happens, we have to start the process.
Well, again, I mean, not only that lot, there's an extra lot, he owns the same two.
Right beside each other.
Jordan Peacock, which is my grandfather's, so, I mean, it's overgrown as well. So I understand the process, but I'm just saying I've been a little more proactive.
No, no, I certainly, I certainly understand. I just want you to know that it is, and I think the manager will follow up some more on this as well.
Because I would think, I would hate to think that in South Smithfield, the same issues don't go on, I'm pretty sure.
So, so let me just, let me just say that, let me be clear.
All right, that's fine.
When we get complaints, no matter if it's in South Smithfield or if it's in East Smithfield, the same process applies.
Okay.
Okay? So letters will go out, correspondence will go out. Some property owners, again, like I mentioned, some property owners will, will take it upon themselves to get things knocked out right away. We try to work with people as much as we can, right? But the same legal process is followed no matter what side of town.
And I'm trying to?
Not the area, South Smithfield, East Smithfield, West Smithfield, North Smithfield. And, I mean, we certainly try to keep, try to process the same way no matter where, right? And I understand, I mean, I get what you're saying, right?
I totally get it.
Yeah. All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'd just want to speak real quickly, because this is kind of the issue that I brought up last meeting. As far as how we enforce different people, that's, we don't enforce the same people the same way. We may have the legal issues, but we don't enforce everybody the same. And I'm not going to prolong it right now, I'm going to speak more during my councilman's comments. But, you know, that issue on Old Goldsboro Road, I mean, it's, I mean, it's prolonging and prolonging. It was a situation behind my church, and which a property owner said he was going to get the grass cut. We have an outside services, a snake has already grown out, crawled out, and this guy didn't do anything, and, I mean, so the enforcement part. And I think it's saying as a council, I mean, here we are with a part-time code enforcer that's doing full-time work. So I think, you know, we need to get him some help, we need to get a full-time position, because, I mean, a half-time position for overtime work is not good. And sending letters out, you never know what happened with the mail, and as he spoke on Fox, everything, all this wildlife is going, so at some point, you know, we, we just need to kind of see where our needs are, and then maybe we will have this position, because I can understand it can be bearing on Mr. Cho. But I'll speak more later in my councilman's comments.
And just, just one comment, you mentioned the fox. My parents live right in the heart of South Smithfield on Chestnut Drive, and they have a fox in their yard. And I can, I can assure you their grass is most of the time cut, right, Mr. Manager, since it's right across the street from your home? But there's foxes running around, and, I mean, I just comment on that, that, you know, there's wildlife everywhere, right?
To expand on that?
Right, right at your house, actually.
If you ever hear a fox bark, you'll think a child's being strangled. Because they'll wake you up in your house, because it's right there in front of my house. There's the foxes and the animals, and there was a nutria that looks like a rat about this big, that's right, so that's not a, that's anywhere. But we get your point.
Yeah, definitely.
Talking about the high grass, not even that to do with animals, we're talking about the high grass. Let's take care of the high grass.
To your point, sir, the manager will continue to look into this. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will then move on to business items. The first business item is S dash 20 dash 01, Twin Oaks. Oh, it skipped consent agenda, sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Yep. We'll move on to consent agenda, excuse me. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries? Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to business items, sorry. All right, number one business item is S dash 20 dash 01, Twin Oaks Subdivision, Section 3, Phase, is that 6?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
A while. So Jimco Development is requesting preliminary plat of Twin Oaks, Section 3, Phase 6. It's a 20-lot, two-family residential development. This is the location, it's out in the ETJ off of Yelverton Grove Road, east side. This is going to be the extension, as you can see, of, it's really the completion of an old subdivision that's laid dormant for probably 15 or so years. This is the last phase, it'll loop the road, it'll loop the utilities, it'll provide lateral extension to adjacent property. The property owner is Jimco Development. The agent's, write a letter, it's the engineer working on the project. It's an 8.62 acre project. It's in the manufactured home zoning district. This particular area is vacant at this time. This will add additional students to the schools. Ultimately, parks and recreation, there's no parks shown in the area, so the applicant will be required to dedicate fees and lieu of parkland. The water provider in this area would be the town of Smithfield. It's, the town has a First Rights to Refuse, providing utilities in the ETJ. Electric power would be Duke Energy. So it's agricultural, R28 land to the north. To the east is the previous phases of this development. To the west is farmland, and to the south is farmland. So again, this is at the end of Will and Ray Drive. The land generally slopes towards Polcat Branch, which is in the woodland area, shown on the image there. As I said, this will be, create a loop of the utilities and the, and the existing drives. So this is the preliminary plat drawing. It shows the utility taps, the water line along the north side of the street, and sewer line in the road. The proposed road is 22 feet wide. I want to point out that the previous phases that were developed years ago had a 27-foot wide street, and that was at the request of the town of Smithfield, and DOT approved it. DOT at this time will only approve a 22-foot wide street. They don't want the extra maintenance, and there should be a letter in your packet to that effect. Also, the Will Drive, the existing Will Drive and Ray Drive have not been accepted by DOT at this time. The developer is working with DOT to get that road approved. The importance of that is if this existing Will Drive isn't approved, DOT will not accept the new road as planned to be built. So it's important that the old roads get accepted so that the new roads can get accepted. As you can see here, also there's a lateral connection going to the farmland to the north and to the south, so if and when those lands develop, there's access. The open space towards the Polcat Ranch contains some wetlands, but there's also some higher ground that is proposed for the storm ponds. So all the new lots are greater than 10,000 square feet, which are large enough for two-family homes. They exceed the minimum requirements. Just to be clear, in the manufactured home park, single-family homes and two-family homes are permitted by right. The open space is 2.15 acres, and that open space will need to be maintained by an HOA, and that's also where the ponds will be, and they will also be required to be maintained by an HOA. This image to the right here shows a typical lot layout. Per the code, if twin homes are indeed put on the property, they have to have parking for two cars per unit, so there'd be four cars per lot, and this typical layout shows it can be achieved. So the, the lots in this development exceed the minimum requirements. This is a typical street section, as I said, it'll be 22 feet wide in a 50-foot right-of-way with ditches on either side. It's a typical DOT street. There will be no sidewalks. I know it's a big issue for the town, we've been pretty strong about requiring sidewalks with all of our developments. This being the, the sixth phase of a previous development, it really makes no sense to have sidewalks. The code does allow the council to waive the sidewalk requirement, and staff is requesting so, because, again, it makes no sense, sidewalk could go to nowhere, it will never be built, there's nothing on Yelverton Grove, so it just doesn't make sense. So as I said, also, Will and Ray Drives are being worked on to be maintained by DOT. Can't remember which one. One of them has actually had an overlay on it, so it's really close. The other one, they're going to wait on the improvements till after the construction, and then bring it up to code, bring it up to DOT standards so that it can be taken over. All right, we talked about sidewalks. The utilities, again, it'd be Smithfield Sewer and Water, it'd be out of town customers, and the previous subdivision, it was originally? originally, originally platted with the whole, the whole, uh, property was platted as a development. And because the previous phases happened so long ago, this one had to start over with a preliminary plat. But originally, it was all conceived of to be, uh, with town, water and sewer with a loop, a loop system. And as you know, a loop system is, is better, it's better to maintain, better water quality, um, overall better for the utility department to maintain. And, um, just because this, this phase has to start over, it, the staff believes it makes sense to extend the water and sewer, uh, for the All right, talked about stormwater management. The op can has provided a, provided a narrative and enough detail, and staff believes that stormwater plans will, will work. Um, there appears to be no impact to trees on the site, so no tree preservation plan will be required. Um, street lighting plan will be required and submitted with the construction documents. There's no flood zones impacting any of these properties. Talked about park dedication, and that's required at the time of final plat. Staff is recommending, um, approval of the preliminary plat. This is an administrative decision, so there's no conditions that can be placed on it. It's an upper down, upper-down vote based on meeting UDO requirements, and staff has, has reviewed it, and it is fully compliant with UDO. The construction drives will, will be, uh, approved administratively by staff, um, following this approval. So the planning, uh, sorry, I didn't update this. Uh, the council is being requested to approve this preliminary plat, and, uh, suggested motion is to, uh, approve the preliminary plat of Twin Oaks, section three, phase, um, five, uh, four, sorry, um, S twenty oh one.
Six.
It's six.
Okay. Any questions for Stephen?
I do have a question, Stephen. Um, in, uh, Jimco, you're here. The, uh, the first part of this project, when was it done?
I can't, I don't know the dates, but it was, it was quite a long time ago. Uh, vesting rights is five years, and it's, it's well past that, so.
But, but you mentioned the sewer loop and the water loop. That makes perfect sense in the grand scheme of continuous service. Because I know we've had some issues with stagnant end pipes and waterways. I just, I just was curious. If y'all, if you don't know, it's fine. Greater than five years. It's greater than five.
Any other questions?
I got a couple of questions. So you said that the roads were not accepted. What happens if the roads don't get accepted by DOT?
Um, the process for accepting DOT roads is you build them. You have to provide core samples and some other information. I'm not necessarily party to, but DOT has to be satisfied that it meets their requirements, and then they accept it. I don't know if the application was ever made to DOT. It just remained a private road for all these years. I think in anticipation of this development, um, and I believe the developer is the son of the original developer. Um, not a hundred percent sure of that, but anyway, um, per the email I provided in the packet, he has been working with the DOT to get compliance, to get the maintenance taken over, and the email confirms that. It's not just hearsay. So staff believes that they are working earnestly to meet the DOT's requirements to get that accepted.
Okay. Uh, excuse me, let me ask the question again. So what happens if the road does not get accepted? I understand that they're working on it. My question is, what happens if the road does not get accepted?
The answer to that is this is a preliminary subdivision. Based on your approval here, they can't occupy any lots or, or, or do anything. Preliminary. You're in that period of town, they have to meet other requirements. They don't get the road approved by the state, no ones.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, sir. The other, I just had a, um, an old dog, old tricks. So my, my, I have just a general comment here. I think it's, uh, I, I'm, I'm not even in favor, as you all know, in, um, utilizing our town resources for non-town assets. So I'm not in favor of, uh, giving our water, especially we discussed so much about water, selling our water to people that aren't annexing into town. It's just, they personally, I understand that this is the phase, whatever, so it's really kind of, we already, we already bought that sheet. So all we can do now is just shake it. That's what it sounds to me like, that we really don't have a choice. You understand what I'm saying? But I'm making a general statement. I don't like it, so you understand. Everybody knows, I don't like it. Uh, the other thing is, I'm also concerned that we pick and choose who we, uh, who we allow to build sidewalks and who we don't. You know, I mean, uh, I just say that I think we need to be careful. I understand that it goes nowhere. But I can show you places in Smithfield today, in West Smithfield, District Four, that has very little development also, where there's sidewalks and don't go nowhere. Now, my point is, I understand that, but I'm just concerned that these other places could come back and say, hold it. You didn't require it here, but you're requiring it here. How are we consistent? That's my concern. You understand? Okay, thank you, sir.
I, I do have a response to that. You know, we had this issue with the comp plan. We had a previous development that was, uh, in the ETJ, and we had the same issue, and we required sidewalks on one side, and DOT said, we're not going to maintain that sidewalk. And so now it's going to be HOA maintained. So we, we kind of worked through that issue with the comp plan process. And, uh, what we came up with is, in the R twenty-eight, those areas that are likely to stay rural, stay in the ETJ, and, and much less likely to come into town, or actually even be, you know, within a distance to walk somewhere, we're not necessarily going to require sidewalks. But anything that's, that's, um, has a different zoning, uh, residentially, would require a sidewalk on one side. So those standards were put into the comp plan, almost, almost like zoning, into the comp plan to provide that guidance so we can adjust our code. We haven't worked through all those changes yet, but the comp plan is providing that guidance. And with that, this would be a rural development, and, and the comp plan's saying sidewalk's not required. So I do have that, um, kind of vision for the community and how, how we sort that out. Furthermore, um, staff has applied for a PET planning grant, and at that point, also, we'll have another layer of where do we need sidewalks? Where do we need trails? Um, once that plan is done, if we get funding for it and move forward with that plan, that'll also provide another layer of, you know, maybe there are places in the rural area that because there's a trail, we need to connect to it. But at this point, we don't have that. We're relying on the comp plan to provide that guidance. And also, the first phases of this development, which didn't go that way.
And I would say, I don't have any problem with what you just said, except we need to put it in place. So that we have consistency. That's all I'm saying. I think we need to be consistent in whatever we do. And if this is the way it's going to sell, I don't have, we, we approved a, a, a district, a subdivision up on, up on the Gallon Lee Road, that we did require that has sidewalks, but we required them to do something different that made more sense for that community. So I don't have a problem with that, as long as we have, you know, we, we, as long as we're consistent in what we do. That's all I'm saying.
That particulars, we do have sidewalks in that development, uh, phase one and two of, what is it, Twin Creeks? They are providing sidewalks in phase one and two, and that actually is an area that's guided for more urban development, which is exactly the guidance that the comp plan provided. So we do have some vision for it.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions for, for Stephen?
Only for you.
Mayor, I have a few comments I'd like to make. Um, I've, um, been looking at this project. It's very clear to me that these gentlemen have, uh, done this over a period of time, obviously for various reasons. I think it would be, uh, foolish for us not to approve this and make this work for them. Uh, I, I do understand council's comments about giving water. We're not giving water. We're just agreeing to add to our out-of-town customers, which are already in the neighborhood. And I think it's important to understand, one thing you mentioned, and understanding it from a technical perspective, is having that loop is a very good thing. So I think it's, I think that these guys should be allowed to, uh, to, to do this. Now, one other concern I have that has nothing to do with this project was, matter of fact, I think this is so small compared to the big scheme. We do, this council does need to look at our sewer capacity with the county agreement. Um, this, uh, this is a topic that is ongoing, um, and as well as the water. But that has nothing to do with this project.
Any other questions for Stephen? So I do have one question. Will, will these, uh, it mentions, um, twenty lot, two-family residential development. Would, would these be stick-built residences?
Six.
Will these be stick-built residences that are proposed?
Yes.
Okay. So they, so there will not be any single wides in this area?
And I'm Bryce Pike, attorney for Jimco. This is Mr. Stacy Whitley, owner of Jimco. So, and this is, is engineer Brian Leonard. So if you guys have questions that they can address.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. But the, but the proposal was for stick-bill. Whether it's single-family or multifamily, it would be stick-bill. Is that, is that, is that correct? Okay. That's all I had.
But it was, the two lots that it showed on the backside, possibility they will be too small, and, and we'd be looking to put a manufactured home double-wide on there.
Okay. Which is allowed? Which is, it's allowed in, in that, it's a manufactured home district, right? Okay. All right. That's all I had. Anything else, gentlemen? Not, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve this request.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to business item number two, which is a bid award and request for approval to enter into a contract with J. Smith Civil LLC in the amount of seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars for the reconstruction of Equity Drive. I'm going to run it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, town manager, town council. Uh, we're excited to bring the Equity Drive improvements project before you know it. Uh, without further ado, we'll turn the floor over to the town engineer Bill Rexer to explain.
Yes, as you said, we're, we're very excited to get this project going. Uh, in a nutshell, uh, it's going, it's North and South Equity Drive. We're going to be doing, um, FDR pavement improvements, just like we did with Venture Drive, the same specifications. Uh, the only difference is with equity, um, along with the, the FDR pavement repairs and the resurfacing, we're going to add curb and gutter on both sides, and we'll be adding sidewalk on the interior of Equity Drive, from outlet center to outlet center. So it's going to be a really nice project. I think it's going to improve that area significantly. We went out to, uh, we advertised for bids on June eleventh, received bids on, on Thursday, July sixteenth. Um, we had, uh, very good participation. We, we had five bids. J. Smith Civil, Turner Asphalt, Brett Smith Company, ST Wooten, and Providence Construction, um, all provided bids. Uh, JS Smith, J. Smith Civil was the low at seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Um, that's a strong bid. I can tell you that, uh, Lenny and I had discussions, um, about the price. We had concerns that potentially this contractor, which neither one of us had worked with, um, understood the scope. And that we were, we were, they were pricing what we were expecting. Um, I had a, a conference call with them, went through the project in detail. Um, basically, they answered all the questions correctly. I could tell they understood the scope. So we followed that meeting, that up with a, an in-person meeting with Lenny, Lenny and myself, with J. Smith. Um, one of the concerns I had was they did not have any experience in, in FDR, that portion of the project. However, um, they have a, a subconsultant that they're using, that, that we had represented at the meeting. They're very, uh, experienced. Um, we had, uh, recommendations of, from both of them, I called it Morrisville-
Lockdown.
And both of them gave very high marks to the company that's going to do the FDR work. So based on, on that due diligence and our comfort level, that J. Smith was capable of doing the job, understood the scope of services, and that they had an FDR, some consultant that was going to be able to do that portion of the project, that brought us to a comfort level that, um, that I'm, uh, can recommend, that, um, that we accept that J. Smith Civil's low bid of seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Might al- also point out, I guess, I was just looking at my notes, um, and I know this is a side, they were the low bid. But the meetings that we had, uh, the project manager for J. Smith is going to be a gentleman, Matthew Jones. And, uh, actually, it turns out that Mr. Jones grew up here in town, went to Triple S and, and lives here, uh, in this area. So it's nice to have a little, I guess that's even a more, more of a comfort level, that you're not worried about a big out-of-town company. Comes in, puts in a real competitive price, hits us with change order after change order after change order, and then leaves town. We've got somebody local here that's trying to build a business. So we're excited to get this project started, and we would recommend that, um, that we award to the low bidder, J. Smith Civil.
Any questions?
So they don't have experience in FDR, but they're going to subcontract after some-
Yeah, the company's name is Ruston Paving.
Okay. So they're going to do the FDR?
They're going to do the FDR. We met with them, had them come to the meeting as well. And they have very, very, that's their specialty.
And, and based off of that, because I'm at, that's probably a pretty large portion of the project, right?
Significantly.
Right? So they under, they're, they know what the bid price is, obviously?
That's correct.
This contracting company, right? So they felt like they could do what they needed to do for J. Smith and still be within that, that budgeted amount, or that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, now, you mentioned that we had, uh, um, checked the references on that company. How about J. Smith? That we, familiar?
Did not check references on J. Smith. The, um, their background, their civil in terms of, of construction, um, sidewalks, roads, resurfacing.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty extensive, uh, Mayor, going into this type of work.
Okay.
They do, I want to do my glasses. I'm sorry. Anyway, uh, I said, I'll get you.
They slid off that head.
I want to cut you off. Uh, Southern, Southern Plains Elementary, um, they've done, uh, UNC Central Athletic Field.
Okay.
Um, they've done the Goldsboro Maxwell Regional Agricultural and Convenience Center. That was a sixty million dollar project. They came in on project and on time. Um, I've done, I've done a little bit of that.
That's what I wanted to make sure, because I thought originally, when this first came out, we weren't sure, or had not really heard of them. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we, at least had-
Yeah, I've never, I've never done any work with them. But, you know, as soon as we're doing a background check on them, they, they, they've done some huge projects. And, uh, and Ruston is, is a huge company. So I've never done any work with them. I've worked with Turner Asphalt, FDR. So it's the same, same project. We're going to pull debt, we're going to make it just like we did, same mixture rate, um, and the same asphalt design. It's going to be a two-and-a-half inch binder base, and then we're coming back with a two-inch, um, surface mix up at the top. So it's going to be a solid road when we're done. Um, the thing is just the process of, you know, getting in and doing surveying and, and the traffic control. And, and we've asked them for a, uh-
Phasey plan.
Yeah, phasey plan on it, and, and to make sure that we work with the businesses on Equity Drive, because the, the whole key is to keep these businesses open, and to keep them informed on, on what we're doing. So when I talk to the project manager, you know, the price was a concern, because I don't like things that are cheap. Coming in, we're going to, we're going to burn down this project a lot. We're going to be out there, his ears will be out there. But the, the main concern is to keep these businesses o- open and, and have traffic flowing as best as we can. Uh, so right now, that, that is the, the process. When we talk with them, you know, council does choose to go with J. Smith Civil, you know, it, it's, it's something you guys were recommending. If you feel, you know, reservations on it, then, you know, we, we can look in another direction. But, um, uh, they, they said they would come in and do a survey first. They're probably looking at, what, maybe thirty days-
Thirty days.
Before they would start. So they're going to do a survey to go in and, you know, get, get us a plan on how they're going to do traffic control and, and look at utilities and, you know, where they need to be at at that point. And hopefully, weather permitting, we can get in and out of this project in less than ninety days. Uh, that is the goal, before cold weather really hits, we can get it open and done and have a good solid road out there.
Are you satisfied with the way they want to do the sidewalks on the inside? Is that what y'all wanted?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, you know, just going in-
I know we had some talk of at least one potential construction project, correct, in that area? So if we were to start this right away and say we go in and put in, start a six, seven-foot, I mean, story hotel or whatever, construction traffic-wise, do we see any issues there? Are we going in and putting in a brand-new road and then is that, should that be a concern of ours right now from a, from a starting standpoint? I don't know where we are in any of those projects and, you know...
I did have concerns, and that was actually one of my comments when we were reviewing the hotel that's getting ready to go into construction.
Right.
And I've been in regular communication and they're, with, through their engineer and copy, the contractors that's going to be doing the work, and they understand that we're looking to probably break ground the first of next month and that the utility connections, the water and sewer, the sewer's in the middle of the road.
Right.
The water's on the other side.
That's what I was afraid of.
Those connections have, have to be done and stubbed to the property prior to us beginning this project. And we have not done this part yet, but we're going to then, we're also going to take a look with Ted, that, uh, if there's any other properties out there that might, that we might want to go ahead and stub the utilities now. And I know with commercial, that's a, that's really hard.
Right, right.
But we're going to at least take a look at it and see what we might can do to try and think ahead to where we won't have to go in and cut this road. And if there's anything we can do from a, a planning standpoint, we're going to do that on any other potential problems. I've also informed the contractor for the hotel that the construction traffic will have to access from, from the, from the backside of the property, outlet center, off the loop.
And they can do that?
They can.
Okay, that's, that would be...
And then we, what we would expect from them is that they would maintain, they would maintain traffic, and they would follow all proper traffic control guidelines from NCDF to get their vehicles in.
Mayor, I have a few questions. Mr. Branch, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Rexler for y'all's work on this. I know it's long overdue. We've talked about it a lot. I'm very excited to see the project come to fruition. A couple of questions I have is I'm thinking ahead of the project. We need to have some type of parking plan in place, because the last thing we need to do is put this, uh, sir, curb and gutter and sidewalk and go out there and find 18 wheelers parked on along the, along the curb and gutter, just because they're trying to stay for the night. I think we need to be ahead of that problem, because that's what's happening now. The other thing, I think working with the business owners is important, let them know they're patrons, that, look, this is not a parking zone, it shouldn't be. It never was designated, but it's just convenient. And the other concern I have was the, I guess this may be from Mr. Seiler, is this company bonded, or they meet the insurance requirements? If they were to pull off the project or fail on the project, that they would be, be secured?
That's correct. As part of the contract process, if council approves J. Smith, prior to signing the contract, the town signing the contract, they will have to provide a payment bond, a performance bond, and certificate of insurance meeting our, our limits.
And that will also deal with the draws and how the payments go in lieu of the project? Is that correct?
Sure.
How they, how you would pay them throughout the project? Because we had some problems before with the contractor and, um...
You mean in terms of paying their, their subcontractors?
No, in terms of us paying them. In other words, you don't pay until the project's done, but there's an agreement through that that they get certain draws?
That's correct. They'll probably be invoicing every 30 days. And really, we're, what we do on a lump-sum project is, and that's where we're going to be, Lenny and I, out there in the field, and, and they'll say, look, we're, we're 30% done, we want this amount of money, and we'll walk the project, we'll see what's actually been done, and we'll say, well, I think I have 10% done. Or they may be 40% done and we're okay with it. So really, that's just, uh, that's us looking at what's, what's been installed and our opinion on whether or not it meets the, the level of, of completion that the contractor is asking you to pay.
That, that was my exact point, to make sure that we had oversight prior to the payment being administered for the project with any contractor.
This is going to be... Yes, sir. This is going to be a, a difficult job, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I understand.
Trying to resurface and reconstruct a road, put sidewalks and curb and gutter with all the activity that we have out there is, is definitely going to be a challenge. I think, and Lenny, Lenny's looking for me to be there a lot. I mean, not just once every two weeks, but several times every week during the course of this project. It's just going to take that level of oversight. We're going to run into things we're not expecting, we know we are, and we're prepared for it. So staff's going to be out there a lot.
Will they be doing a lot of, a lot of this at night, or do you know? Can we require them to do some of it at night?
We haven't discussed that. What we're required of them is that they must maintain access to all businesses at all times. That includes the three hotel sites that only have one way in and one way out. And that's, this is the phasing plan that they're putting together for us to review and approve ahead of time.
And basically, the, the way I understood it when I talked with Matthew and Ruston, one of the plans is maybe doing like a stage, it's like one, two, three in the back of Equity Drive and the loop. I'm not really sure. I haven't, I don't know who owns the building. I know it used to be the outlet center, operational center that was out there beside the pond. I'm not really sure if it's occupied, and if it's not, then maybe we could do that loop first when we go into our FDR and go ahead and FDR that whole back loop, and then come in and do one lane on the north Equity side to get in, and then do the other lane on the north Equity side. Do them in phases, that way when you route traffic, you know, we could do this phase with the route traffic in one lane coming in from south Equity. That's going to be a, you know, a thing that we're looking at. But doing it in maybe one to three phases, set on the paving part. On the paving part, we're going to pull a lane and we're going to do it. When we start out, outlet center route, we're going to go all the way around and go ahead and keep everything connected for a status, and so everything looks uniform and it's in, in good shape. Probably, more than likely, it's going to be a three-phase system when we start it, but it's basically going to be on the, if we can do it with the, uh, commercial businesses and it's allowed. But we're going to, we're going to look at all phases and how we can do this thing and get in and out and have a good project.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? No. It was the pleasure of the council.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the, uh, J. Smith Civil Agreement as published by staff.
Motion and a second to approve the bid award, J. Smith Civil LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And we'll move on to business item number three, which is discussion concerning utility late fees. Mike, run it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item is in front of you today as a result of some of our budget discussions that we had and some concerns that we had over the man, the managing or the way that we issue utility bills to our customers. Some concerns were and some questions were raised about if we could allow our customers to select their own due dates, if we could, uh, perhaps allow greater leniency or more time for, before penalties are, are instituted for late payments and how we manage our cutoff list. I will tell you, some of you may remember, this, this was discussed several years ago in front of the council, and the council at that time, of course, our, our revenues were, were down and some of, some of our fund balances weren't as high as they are today. But they were pretty adamant that we have very little periods of time for any type of penalty being issued for late payments. Right now, our penalties generate about $200,000 a year for, for our utility funds. There really is not a way, and I'm going to have Greg address this as well, for us to change our due dates or for us to allow people to choose their own due dates. With our meters being read by meter readers, they need a specific section of town to go read the meter, just like the mailman does. Goes from one house to the next. He can't run from one side of town to the other side of town, check a meter that's due in the same time. That wouldn't be cost-effective for us and, and that would not meet our requirements for our meter-reader contract. So allowing them to select their own due dates really doesn't work well and really isn't feasible under our current system. What could be done, as the council shall choose, is we could allow more time before a late penalty kicks in. As I think, right now, if you have, if you are late one day, your penalty kicks in. If you wanted to allow five days or 10 days before a penalty kicks in, by proxy, you're really moving your due date five days or 10 days down the road until your, your penalty is due. And that is something that we can manage with our current system. So I'm going to ask Greg if I've missed anything, or if he has any input, then I'd ask the council to discuss the matter and ask any questions they might have to decide if they want to change what we are currently operating under.
Thanks, Mike. I think you covered everything very well. I will add this one comment to moving the penalty date out 10 days, which is our recommendation to, to remedy or alleviate late fees for some, some customers. By moving it out 10 days, Mike, as Mike said, we are in effect changing the cutoff date as well. That means customers that can't pay or have no intentions of paying before they leave the property could potentially get 10 more days of service. That's a third of the month. While it's hard to put a number on what that might be in terms of revenue losses for the town, because indeed, most people, when they leave a property, will pay if they want to file a bill. There are some customers that seem to think that paying is an option for them. So while it's difficult to put a number on additional, on revenue loss, I'm, I'm comfortable in saying they could very easily reach six figures over the course of the year, that we could potentially lose another.
Should the deposit offset some of that, though?
Deposit often does offset, offset.
That's what I say, that's why you have a deposit, so I feel like that.
We don't hold our deposits indefinitely. We hold our deposits. If the customers have one year of good payment history, we give deposits back.
That may be something we need to look at.
Mr. Seiler, thank you for bringing this topic up, and you and I have several correspondence about this. And just so everybody understands, this was during our budget discussion. We talked about this prior to the COVID situation that we're currently in. And simply put, this situation revolves around some of our elderly people that are on fixed incomes, get that payment on a certain day, and when they get their income, their power bill's already passed due. And just a few days will give them that variance, as you mentioned, 10 days. So looking at the picture pretty clear, this has a huge impact on helping those that are on fixed incomes that generally pay their bills. Now, I understand you just shared that that could be a detriment to the town. We're going to possibly lose penalty income, which that's income we really don't want to have to collect anyways, it's more work for you guys, but I understand. I do have a question about that, though. As Mr. Rabel asked you about the deposit, I understand that's probably a credit later in a bill, so it becomes a wash. But my question to you is, if we have past, uh, past due amounts, and again, thinking in a normal realm, not COVID, do we not have debt set off that we reached those funds for?
We do have debt set off. But for those that perhaps aren't aware, let me explain how debt set off works. We filed a claim with the state of North Carolina such that if individuals have a state refund and state-owned, if they have monies coming back to them, we get in line to collect our share.
In line. I understand. I do understand it's no guarantee. Can I ask you one other question, just so I understand? You mentioned the two dates, and that was really hard to move the two dates, the due dates. Can you tell us what they are?
The due dates?
Yes. There's two cycles in Smithfield.
Right. Cycle one and cycle two. One cycle has the 5th of the month due date, and the other cycle has the 20th of the month. And what, what makes this such a challenge for us, Councilman Scott, is while we would love to accommodate people on fixed income that get paid once a month, we don't know when they're getting paid. Social Security, unlike days in the past, aren't paying on the first of the month. They're paying all over the month.
I, I know. I understand that. But I, the ones that I've talked to, this seems to be a perfect solution, and I, I think your 10 days would, would be a good mix for both of us. And we could revisit it, but I, I think we should certainly entertain that. So that, it's just like most mortgages, you're due on the first, late on the 15th, or fill in the blank. I mean, I don't think that's only good business practice, is that we have a, a variance, because let's be honest, it's not been convenient for people to come and tell how to pay their bills recently. And I understand the challenge, and I'm not fussing at anybody, but I think that we should have some variance here to make this system work. That's all the comments I have, Mayor.
When we go to the smart meter, won't we be able to put them all on one bill one time a month? We go completely smart there, because we won't have this guy's rating?
It's still impossible. A common thing that I hear regularly is, I can't, Smithfield does what Duke Energy's doing. Duke Energy has spent million dollars, millions of dollars on the software. We have a software package that's designed for towns our size. It costs roughly $200,000. It doesn't have the capability to do what larger energy companies are doing. In addition to, it's the, how we currently read routes, that Mike pointed out. Giving customers an option of a due date is just not an option at this point, because our meter readers would be all...
That's what I'm saying, once we go to smart meters, we won't have meter readers, so it'll all be...
But we're still, we still would be reading by routes.
Kind of a virtual rating. Yeah, I understand.
That's what smart meters are supposed to do.
Mayor, I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor that, uh, that we, the council asked staff to create a new policy, giving the 10-day, uh, late fee extension. Is that the right way to say it, Greg?
It's moving the late fees...
Penalty.
Out 10 days from where it's now.
For utilities. And also, um, would you bring us a draft which includes the cutoff? That, that's got to be a part of that.
Right. Because unfortunately, we cannot cut customers off until after that process.
And I don't, I understand. And this would be for, uh, for all accounts? Or is this, is that, that's only fair, right?
Correct. It would be everyone in the town's due date. Penalty date would move out 10 days.
Kurt, did you get that? Okay, thank you.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Seiler. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg.
Now, we will move on to business item number four, which was removed from the consent agenda, which is the discussion about the LGC letter and the additions, or the rewrite of that letter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the council would go back to page 113 in its jet packet, you will find a letter dated February 13th from the local government commission, that's February 13th of this year, telling us that we need to, um, change our policies in the way that we are conducting and completing our year-end reports. Back at that time, we issued a letter to local government commission that was signed by everyone on February 27th, which is on page 116 and 117. We did not hear back from the local government commission until last week, I think it was the 23rd or 24th, saying that that letter wasn't sufficient for their needs based on their request, uh, February 13th. So, uh, Mr. Seiler rewrote the letter based on their request, which you see on page 119 of your packet, ran that up the flagpole to the local government commission, and they said that would meet their, their requirements. This letter, because it is for the local government commission... year, telling us that we need to change our policies in the way that we are conducting and completing our year-end reports. Back at that time, we issued a letter to local government commission that was signed by everyone on February 27th, which is on page 116 and 117. We did not hear back from the local government commission until last week, I think it was the 23rd or 24th, saying that that letter wasn't sufficient for their needs based on their request February 13th. So Mr. Siler rewrote the letter based on their request, which you see on page 119 of your packet, ran that up the flagpole to the local government commission, and they said that would meet their requirements. This letter, because it is for the local government commission, requires everyone's signature on it for the council, so we weren't able to take any action on it until tonight. So the request in front of you is to approve the change from what is, what was approved on page 116 to what they're asking us to approve on page 119 of your agenda packet, which deals specifically with year-end adjustments in the audit process.
And Greg, I guess if you have anything better to add?
Mayor, I have some questions about this. You know, in fact, Mike, I did not know, and it may be two unrelated things, which I was told was, I wanted you to clarify for us what we're dealing with here. On May 28th, the council took action to table the water plant project, and I understand that today, there was supposed to be a hearing at LGC for that grant, for that loan. Is this the reason they denied that, or that wasn't heard?
No, this doesn't have anything to do with the water plant. As you see on page 113 of your original letter, dated February 13th in bold print, says right on there, "If you are planning to issue debt that requires the approval of the local government commission, we must receive a complete and thorough response to this letter before recommending your debt application." So when that debt, when that LGC meeting came up, apparently, they went back and reviewed that and decided it wasn't what they wanted, and asked us to change it. But it's not related to the water plant at all. It's related to any meeting we're going to have with the local government commission, as indicated on their letter on page 113.
Can you tell us basically what's the difference between the two letters?
Greg, you wanna go ahead?
I'll do my best to. Because we responded to the first letter within a very short period of time, about 35 days, we got a response to it in two weeks. And we never heard anything back, which is not uncommon. It's an indication that they've accepted your letter. In fact, someone from LGC conveyed to Mike that they had looked over it, they had no comments about it, and it was considered accepted. So that was as surprising as anyone to hear back from them for an update. But basically, the difference is, they didn't feel like it that I addressed their questions in the letter, after they looked at it a second or maybe third time. And a couple of things that was pointed out was the explanation that the auditor had given, that some of the balance sheet accounts weren't reconciled timely, and they had to do them, was because we were installing the software. And so that was just a comment I made, that our software is indeed installed, that I didn't address in the first letter. And the second comment, which actually was the first comment, but the second of the two, was me specifically addressing our plan for reconciling the balance sheet statements or items on a timely basis. And so for governments our size, it's not uncommon that auditors have done this for us in the past, but the rules for auditing are constantly changing.
I'd also add to that, on July 24th, as we were going through this issue with the local government commission, Susan McCullen, who is the assistant director of fiscal management for the LGC, in her email, part of it cites, "Please accept our apologies to your manager and your board for the confusion caused by this letter needing to be revised. I appreciate your frustration with having to redo something you thought was completed. We should have raised our concerns about this response earlier when we received it and did not."
Can you explain page 112, Greg?
After a second review of the letter, they asked if we give an update. That was a term that they used in addition to a second response, just updating where we were in the process of addressing the items that they've audited. Does that answer?
Wonder where we are, maybe?
Right, so in my letter, I pointed out that we were going to be hiring someone qualified, ideally a CPA, if the income that we're offering is sufficient to accommodate, that would help with these items. Town Smithville is a small town. We have a very limited staff, unlike large towns that have a much greater number of employees to carry out their daily business.
Mr. Siler, I understand that. I acknowledge that, that you guys are limited in your staff, and I don't want you taking it as personal. But I do have a question for the manager. Mike, are we pursuing LGC for financing for the water plant after the May 28th discussion and tabling the project?
Well, Councilman Scott, as you recall, I wasn't at that meeting, but I did go back and listen to the meeting, and I looked at the minutes, and I saw nothing in there telling us not to proceed with this. What I saw was a motion to table discussions on the water plant until you had more information, which is what we're trying to provide you by going to LGC. Matter of fact, I believe Councilman Barber even made the statement, clarified the motion at that meeting, that this was not going to be a delay of the water plant expansion, only a time to seek more information. So that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I understand the communication issue. I think transparency is very important for our citizens. I made the motion, and that was not my intent. I know we just approved those minutes tonight, and that's understandable that there could be some confusion, perhaps we need to get on the same page. But I've talked to council, and I thought with who, with the light of where we're at with the COVID situation, all the questions that came up, you know, that's a question that we really need to sit down and talk about. Why are we doing this? Now, I'm gonna leave that right there. I understand that we have some other discussions that could potentially change things, and I'll leave it at that. But I just wanted to put this out there, because it's so important for us to be transparent with each other in our communications. And when I got a call from a citizen that thought that they understood the same motion that we put on the table, and it looked like that that's not what staff was doing, and the council hadn't acknowledged what staff was doing, and don't take it personal, but we just need to be on the same page. I didn't, I was not aware that the LGC was going to be hearing the water plant loan, because I thought we had stopped the project.
Okay, well, I can appreciate that. But I did send the council two reports on that, the day that I, one, the day I got the information from LGC, and one, the day after I got that, telling you, telling everyone that we were meeting with LGC.
Yeah, and that was, okay, I'm not gonna get into weeds with you, and I understand, but that was prior, that was after this, and you said you were absent from the meeting?
No, this was, LGC didn't have its meeting scheduled when you had your meeting in May. As soon as I learned about the meeting, I sent the council an email, and also spoke verbally with the mayor and told him about the meeting. And then the day after, I sent another memo to council, telling you again that we had the meeting coming up. I believe it was May, or I'm, July 21st. So I was, I was attempting to be transparent as I could be. It wasn't, I understand.
And my accusation was not that you haven't, just for clarification. I just think it's important, with the nature of this project and where we're headed, that we need to be.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I think we got off topic, I was out of order in that respect of bringing that up. I just wanted to ask for clarification, because it is on page 112, and that's what we have.
No, that's totally fine.
Mr. Mayor, since we're off topic just a moment, I have a question related to that. The question is, so, Mr. Scott, if I'm not mistaken, the town council has already voted in favor of a water expansion, and therefore, the only way to stop that would be to somehow rescind that vote, not table a discussion. Tableing a discussion does not rescind a vote by the council. Am I correct or incorrect?
No, that's correct.
So therefore, the only thing that we could do is not discuss something, but we cannot take away that we would have to officially, which we can do, officially vote to rescind a vote that we've already made. But tabling a discussion could not stop, even if it's being done at this point, other than discussing it, because it's already, a vote that's been done. There's no wrong with saying we need to change the vote and change and do something different that we don't want to do. But my point is, I don't, that's what I'm thinking. I don't, I think the discussion purposes was that we did not have the information that we needed. We're still waiting on certain information to come through, as far as moving some, the next steps in the process, but that's why I'm just asking the question. And as far as, right now, the water plant is approved. It was voted on over a year ago, and was approved, I believe, unanimously. Now, there's been lots of discussion, lots of things done since then, and there've been information brought up that revealed different lights on things that maybe we did not understand at the time. But until we do something different, that vote is still in place. Am I correct or incorrect?
No, the vote still stands until rescinded. And staff realizes this is a very sensitive issue to a lot of people, and a lot of people have put in a lot of personal time to look at this, and we appreciate that. And we've, staff has spent a lot of time with community members, trying to answer their questions as well. So we understand transparency, as Councilman Scott said, is extremely important. But my goal, and the goal of my staff, has always been to get all the information we can possibly get, so the council can make informed decisions, and that's still our goal here.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on the letter?
When were these letters signed?
On page 116, 117.
The first one?
That was signed on February 27th, I believe.
Because I don't write like this. That's not my handwriting.
Well, Councilman Lee, I can assure you, you signed this memo right on that line.
That's my handwriting?
I can tell you that. You used your pen and your hand to sign that letter.
No matter who's pen it was, but this, this, this is not my handwriting.
Do you need a motion to approve this letter?
We do, and we will need everyone to sign it for the local government commission, just like the last one.
I'll move we approve the letter second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember's comments? One motion to speak. Councilman Lee, you mentioned, you might have some things, sir?
Just a few, just a few updates on some old business. I know, kind of, a little bit in the budget time, we talked about it, just haven't seen any action yet. I know one day, Lenny stopped by the Seviar Community Center, and we talked about putting the road bumps out, even till last week, you know, serving the meals and stuff, that traffic is still, I mean, that traffic is still coming through, cutting through on Lee Street, going whatever. Really don't know what the situation's gonna be like with JCC, you know, when them kids start going back to school, but I think I still would like to see some action there. I finally did find out that Martha McKean is not a state road, and some of the residents have been having some issues right there. I know Mr. Lisa Brazil, I know she's definitely brought that up, but still, some of that traffic flying, and most of it, majority of the time, is people cutting through to get to JCC. So just, just kind of seeing where we are with the road bumps or whatever. Last month, I had some residents, I know one of the residents is here now, one of the young ladies, she left, they came from Athens to the drive, talking about, you know, the constant flood that's been going on over 30, 40 years there. We did get an email back from the town manager, and just, you know, just my only question was, is why? You know, I guess there was a lack of communication from the petitioners back to the staff, and you know, just my only reservation was, is, you know, this, this has been going on for a long, long time. I know a minute ago, our engineer got up here and spoke about being in the field, once we talked about equity drive. You know, my question, you know, to him is, just like Lenny was out yesterday, before the hurricane, you know, on the streets or whatever, has the engineer actually seen some of the videos, some of the pictures, been out there in the field, before we rely on him to make a decision? Last time we used him for a decision, it was almost, it was embarrassing. We talked about the flooding out of Smithville Collins Park, and then about a week later, it looked like somebody took a shovel and shoveled over the trench right through the park. So it don't take engineering to do that. So just wanted to kind of get some update on that. And, you know, just still going back to our code enforcement, who are we enforcing, who are we not? So, and just keep in mind, last month, we did sign a resolution, and I'm gonna keep reminding us on this resolution that we signed here again, you know, don't want to keep talking in a moment, but we want to see some stuff happen, and part of what I'm talking, this, it just didn't come about, you know, the last two or three months. Finally, I've been having some conversations, deep conversations, and matter of fact, I was talking to a few members of the NAACP, just, just brief conversation, and how they kind of look at the town, you know, there's some questions that I had, and I hear again, some of it was kind of made mention tonight, but been doing some research. I've had some research done years ago with Tim Caravan, just on some of the minorities that came through, you know, departments, the number of department heads. Of course, in some positions, there've never been any. I know in our resolution, we talked about, you know, the practice of hiring minority officers, and I've always told Chief Powell, you know, as a minority, in one area, I was sitting hand to hand, and if we got to build a job fair, whatever we need to do, I'd be a part of it. So I'm not gonna complain about anything, especially if I can be a part of it. Some of the other things that definitely came up was, and I want staff to be able to produce some, some information, and outside of the Henn guys that normally do our paving, I want to know how many minority contractors are we dealing with? I want to get names of who, of some of the minority contractors that we deal with whenever these jobs come up. You know, a lot of times, people talk about privilege here in Smithfield. Some more research that I've done, and I want staff to help me, you don't have to put names, but some of the council, the last five, 10, 15 years, plenty department heads, plenty workers, their kids are the ones that get the summer jobs, and that's a fact. That's fact. That's a definitely fact. So how is it that they are able to get summer jobs? Do they apply for them? Are their applications out? And, you know, I want to know. I got a daughter that be growing up, be needing a job in a few years, and she's gonna be guaranteed a job. So this is some of the things that I've been having a conversation about, and I want to find some answers to it, and be, and be able to present it. But the contractors, you know, and you know, a lot of people are looking at the privilege, you know? So by me being on the council, is my, is my daughter more privy than the person that actually may be more qualified? I want to be able to understand and get a number of how many of our workers, kids, are getting summer jobs. So that's all I just got for now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I have a few comments.
Mayor, I have a few comments. In order of business, I would like to bring up the fact of the water plant, and simply put, the more I think about this, I don't understand what table the discussion versus the project really means. To me, that's hideous in the way it's described. I would like to reclarify my motion, that we table the water plant because of the situation that we're in. Expansion, and take the money that we have, and have staff come up with a plan to fix what we have.
If you need clarifications, on page 61 of Agenda Packet. It was unanimous? The council understood? I thought you even asked the staff, did he understand?
Any other?
I have a few comments. Mayor, I made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that was a motion. I thought you were just clarifying what you were saying.
I'm sorry. I made a motion that, referring back to the minutes in page 61 of our Agenda Packet, it says we're tabling the discussion, which doesn't really, I'm sorry for the choice of words, but I'm making a motion that we table the water plant.
Expansion.
Expansion.
I want to address that, please.
No, I'm not mad at it. It's fine.
I want to address that, because it is not my position to know what your intent is. It is my position to know what you said. I listened to that four times. I did not know that your intent was to stop all the discussion, or to stop the forward motion of the water plant. That is not what you said. I listened to what you said four times, Councilman Scott. It is my job to accurately reflect what you say, not what your intent is.
And Shannon, with all due respect, I certainly wasn't trying to call you out for that, and I understand you have a hard job. That's why I'm trying to clarify it now. I'm not mad at you in any way.
Well, I'm not upset either, sir, but it is not an intent to know what your intent is.
Councilman Scott, can I ask you a question, sir? Not personally. If we want to table something without discussion and stop it, let's have a discussion next month. This dog has been beaten dead. The horse is dead. And figure out what we need to do, whether we need to move forward, why and why not, and I'll be, and, and if it's, it's not feasible, hey, let's come back, and I'll be the first one to make the motion that it's not. But just, just get together and find out why it's not feasible. You know, we can, we can sit and jump around it all night long, but it's tough. If we want to get to the brass tacks of it and get the thing done, let's just have it in business for next month. Everybody's air out why and why not, and we can go from there. But just to table it because we're... I'm not going to, I mean, boy, if you use the words today, boy, they'll be turned all around on you. But because we're not capable of making the correct decision. We can get all the information, we won't get all, how, all the information you can get together, and just show me. I'm willing to do it, but I'm not going to work, I'm not going to base it on maybe a some water went through a pipe and there was some excess drainage. If we need this, then we need it. If we don't, then we don't. But I'm not, we don't need to give away the farm just because, we're supposed to look at it from the town. And we don't need to give away the farm for nothing. I mean, show me, show us, the whole council, as a whole, the town citizens, why we shouldn't. Hey, I'm with you. I'm all with you, and I think everybody else would agree to that, too.
Yeah, Councilman Stevens, thank you for the comments, and I do understand your, your point. And I would like to clarify, perhaps I've spent too much time looking at this project, but there's a lot of unanswered questions, and the real risk, and we can have discussion, the real risk is the financial debt that we're faced with without a security for, for the project, and that, that's really what it boils down to, my mind. It's real simple. If the bulk customers don't decide they want our water, the residents of Smithfield will have to pay for it. And we are using a very small portion of our water for the residents of Smithfield, so I think that's where the real confusion is.
If it makes us money, I don't care about it.
Yeah, but the concern is...
If it's feasible, if it's feasible.
Yes, but there's no guarantee.
Mike, how long have the county been buying water? The county's been buying water from the town? Do you have the information?
I'm sorry.
How long has the county been purchasing water from the town?
Approximately was in 1999.
And prior to that, you don't, you don't know? So at least 20 years.
Mayor, with all due respect for people's time, I would ask that I rescind my motion. I realize several of our councilmembers are not here, and we have further discussion about this. Perhaps we have a special meeting, and this has got to be figured out. I thought we were already past this. Is that helpful?
I agree. You know, work with you anyway, it needed to be done. I think we all will.
Is that okay with you, Councilman Lee?
Well, you're not about it.
Indeed.
All right. All right. Thank you, Councilman Scott. Mr. Barber?
Yes, I have a few comments. I apologize. I didn't know you were making a motion today. First thing, we did have a task force meeting on drone, developing a strategy for both the town and for the citizens, on July the 14th. About 10 of the staff members there, it was very well received. I think we have work to do, recognize it, but there's a value add for the town and for the citizens of Smithfield, so we'll continue to pursue that. Also, I wanted to let you know that we did have, and I do appreciate our town folks getting involved with DOT to help resolve a drainage problem on Wilson Mills Road. That was a DOT issue, but our town people got involved and made sure that DOT took care of the issue, so we thank them for that. And finally, I would like to make a comment that's of a personal nature, but I'm obligated to do this, given today. As some of you may or may not know, my father, Father Parker, passed away today, this afternoon. He was a simple man with simple needs, simple wants. I owe my strength of character and love to him and his daddy Walter. I am honored to be his son, and I miss him, so I'll see him again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barber. True thoughts and prayers are with you today, sir. I know it's not easy sitting up here, but hopefully that's, this meeting has taken a little bit of things off your mind tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate all of you guys. I appreciate it.
Know that we're, we're with you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, with a lighter side, I want to congratulate my son. This is a personal, well, I'm sorry that it doors up, but I'm proud of it. My son and his wife just welcomed their first child in the last 45 minutes.
Awesome.
Everything went, well, I have a whole trouble with him, Riker, Allen, Wood. My grandfather now, so.
Wow. Congratulations, sir. A boy or a girl?
A little boy.
Awesome. I guess Roger could go the other way.
Roger may be the one.
I guess to go the other way.
They named him Chug. Now, this is, this is a R.A.W., his name, his little name is named after him, Knox first. Congratulations.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I do have one other comment. I was absent from the last meeting, and I just wanted to say it, and I've told him personally, but I want to thank Councilmember Lee for his efforts in a lot of this minority stuff that he's been focused on. That has been a national agenda topic, and he has put a lot of time into some of the things, and I know some things get passionate at times, but he has been a professional, and he has done things that people don't realize he's done for this town. And with that, he and I have had some discussions, and Marlon, I don't know if you were able to share this, I don't see, the police chief is here, and, you know, we have, our police officers have a very tough job. I know y'all have had some discussions about this, but just to bring it back, listening to some of the people, I would ask that there's one thing that we can take in consideration with our law enforcement. I know we have CULIA, I know we follow their accreditation, I know you guys work hard to do the right thing, and it only takes one mistake to make a disaster, or, you know, to make a, a problem, and in anything that we do, whether it relates to criminal activity and, and, in all regards. But there's one simple thing, Chief, I would ask if you could look into it, and it simply deals with presentation. If our officers could have the opportunity to have a general appearance versus a uniformed appearance in certain aspects of their career, it may make them, people feel that they're more approachable, because the uniform and badge can be emitting. I'm not saying you take them all out of uniform, but I'm saying if the time is right, that you would allow them to exercise that, that policy. Just that simple. And that's just discussion, Mayor. I just wanted to bring that up because we hadn't talked about that.
All right. So Bob, good to see you, sir. How you feeling?
Good.
Good. Welcome, welcome back. Welcome back. So just real quick, so we did dodge, you know, what could have been a pretty, pretty, even though it was a category one storm, could have, could have, could have caused havoc here in Smithfield, which we have seen in some of our weaker storms. So again, hats off to the department heads and to all the staff who, who prepared for this. I think we had two, two electrical outages last night, and they were all repaired last night. So great job to the utility crews, but just all, all town staff and being prepared, and as we enter into the season, let's, let's keep it up. My brother-in-law actually manages, I'm not sure if you've seen on the news, Southport, but he is actually the manager of the Southport Marina. If you've seen any of those pictures, he's had, he's had a pretty rough day today. So I don't think they were really expecting that, and they woke up to see it. So, but again, thanks to, to all the staff for, for all the preparations, and let's just continue with those preps. I know there's been some, I think, staff, maybe Brian, sent some reminders out on our social media, and I think, yeah, I think I saw Councilman Stevens had commented about yard debris, and I actually commented, I think, with a, with a picture. We do an awesome job picking up yard debris, but simply putting grass clippings right in front of a, a storm drain is, is definitely not the right thing to do. And I don't want to get to where we have to require, or just not allow it, or require our clippings to be bagged or put into containers, but as we grow, and we are growing, that may be something that we have to start looking into. So I just ask that our, the people remind our neighbors and so forth, and we all do our, our part to, to make sure that we keep our storm drains clear, because a lot of times, that is the issue when we have this localized flooding and so, not all the time, but, but sometimes that is, that is the issue. So we all need to do our part to help maintain that as well. So with that being said, gentlemen, the town manager, I think that's your report.
Just a few quick things. As I sit here and listen to the councilmen's comments, it occurs to me how fortunate we are to have such a council that is so devoted to our town. Lot of tragedy, lot of elation going on right now, right here in front of everyone, and yet everyone is here tonight. We have a man who just underwent surgery a few days ago, probably shouldn't be here tonight, but he is still here. The dedication of this council just goes beyond speaking about. Thank you. We are trying to schedule a meeting, a joint meeting with the council and the planning board, to talk about conditional zoning so we can move this forward, and we would like the council to look at its schedules tonight, give us a few days in the, what would be the last two weeks of August, that they may be able to meet in a separate meeting with the planning board to discuss conditional zoning. Is there a day of the week that works better for some than others? Tuesdays, Thursdays were always common during the budget process. We'd really like to get something on the books that would work for, for everyone and planning board.
Monday or Tuesday, sir? Monday or Tuesday?
So, Mr. Manager, may I ask Sarah a question? Do you happen to have any results back from, from our community meeting yet? Myself and Councilman Lee may be involved in, because there were several dates that went out that time period, and we did a poll, so that's why I'm asking, Mr. Manager. Hate to schedule this on top of that, and then we have to...
We can send out a doodle poll if you like.
If you don't, maybe we do that. That maybe give you time, Sarah, to get yours wrapped up. Is that...
Yeah, we have a little bit more than time, but we need to have.
Okay.
They look like you have Monday, Sunday, or Tuesday.
Okay. So can we do that? Can we just send out? Is that okay with the council?
We will, please look for it and try to get back to us as quickly as possible with it, so that we can make the necessarily notifications to the public as well as schedule the room.
I just don't want to schedule it on top of this meeting that we're already trying to do.
All right. An update on our CARES funding. We are currently in the process of receiving a little over $421,000 in CARES funding for the town to assist with COVID-19 expenses, as well as any ancillary issues related to COVID-19. So our league of municipalities did a great job for the town advocating for us that at least 25% of this revenue from the federal government come to municipalities and towns, not just counties. So that will be a welcome amount of funds to help assist us through this process. Our downtown Wi-Fi is just about completed. They're in the testing phases now. We expect it to be fully operational by the end of the month, so if you are downtown, you should be able to hook up to Wi-Fi by the end of August. Lastly, I just want to make mention that the water department has noticed a small increase in THM levels along the water lines near the country club. To remedy that, we are flushing hydrants down in that area continually. This is not an unusual occurrence for this time of year. This often occurs in July and August, when the temperatures are extremely hot, and bacteria grows at a faster, higher level in these hot pipes. So it is nothing to be alarmed about. We're well within safe limits. However, to keep our water quality high, we are flushing that area to bring those levels back where we want them to be. That is all I have.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right. For the business, gentlemen, we do need to go into a closed session. If I could get a motion and a second to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, statute 143 dash 318, point 11, section A4?
Second.
A motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll go into closed session at this time. And Mr. Man-